Called Monday, August 26, 2019, regular meeting of Peterstownship Council's order. Mr. Lauer, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Merrill?
Present.
Mr. Teigle will not be here tonight. Mr. O'Curry?
Here.
Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Berquist?
Here.
Mr. Ball?
Here.
Let's stand for bled allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 12, 2019. Prove.
Second.
The motion in the second A discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Stand, please.
Five zero one, Mr. Lauer. Next item is special reports, of which there are none. Move on to audience comments. This is a portion of the meeting where any member of the audience can speak up five minutes on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing no one, we will move on to unfinished business, of which there also is none. So we will move right into new business. First item being Peterstownship Park and Recreation Board's recommendation concerning use of lawn in the community recreation centers.
On June 20th, the Peterstownship Park and Recreation Board, as part of the regular meeting, discussed the use of the gym space for baton twirling. The board concluded that the floor was in fact being damaged by the baton shaft striking the surface, and they asked the parents and the participants to return with suggestions on how you might mitigate that problem, so that in fact they would be in a position to take action in August. The township staff was charged with seeking guidance from the floor manufacturer. In your docket is a letter from the Maple Floor Manufacturers Association that states that the use of batons is not recommended on maple gym floors. Batons when thrown high in the air and allowed to impact the surface can cause cup mark scratches and indentations in the gym gymnasium finish in maple flooring. The park and rec staff attempted to communicate with the twirlers to get information as to what their research had had shown and what they were willing to do in terms of a method to mitigate this. They received two responses. The park and rec board, based upon the information they had in hand, is making a recommendation to the to council to prohibit baton twirling on the gym floor once the gym floors resurfaced at the beginning of September. They also recognized that people may have purchased gym memberships based upon this particular use, and they're suggesting that if in fact people want, that they be given an opportunity for a refund. So I think you have people in the audience here.
Anyone want to speak on this topic? Board, please state your name and address, ma'am.
I spoke with you guys last time we were here. My name is Kim Klein. I am from Cecil Township. My address is 17 Gladon Road in McDonald. And I just want to try and understand, first of all, the response. There's four of us mainly who use the floor. I was under the impression when we had the meeting in June that we were going to come back together and talk, and July was a very busy month for most of us because we were preparing for Nationals. I started a new job, and I know when I was texted and asked for input, I didn't have anything ready because I wasn't prepared. But I did start to look for stuff, and I thought, we all thought, that we were going to be able to work through a compromise with protective mats, and I want to know why that option isn't available on the table anymore.
Do we know why that option isn't on the table?
Well, from what my understanding is, and Michelle Harmon was here, from what my understanding is, that again, I by chance happened to be at that June 20th meeting. What the park and rec board had indicated is that they wanted to take action on a recommendation at their August meeting. So that became when the deadline was for information.
And we weren't aware of that, so I mean, we thought-
That was the discussion at the meeting.
Well, I don't like this. All of us believed that we had till August to talk about it, knowing that after the floor was being redone in September. So we didn't, we weren't prepared.
I communicated with Sheri, everybody knows Sheri, that works with all of the twirlers. She knows all of them and works with them. And two weeks prior to that meeting, I had asked her to communicate with everybody, saying that we hadn't received anything. Could she please remind them that this was the board's request and that they wanted information so that they could make a decision? She text messaged them. She told us that she had text messaged them, and the two responses were what we had received after that, so.
The other thing, and I'm not sure if the message didn't get you, but I was there the night you guys had the meeting, and I told the girl at the desk I would like to talk to, at least Josh, and I never saw him. So I don't know if you guys didn't get the message or what, but I was there, so.
Well, I mean, if we were in a meeting, then it's a public meeting, you could come in. We didn't, I didn't get the message, no.
Well, I wasn't, I didn't want to just walk right in, I didn't know, so.
Are there issues with the mats?
Well, there were issues with the mats that we had provided originally. I didn't see what the emails were, but apparently the council had received numerous emails about the mats that we had provided.
So just to clarify that, that was a concern when we first started using them because of the slipping, and I was one of the ones that sent the email because I was concerned with them slipping. And after my daughter had twirled on it for a week, she was fine with it, so. And I think that was the message that we gave back to whoever was there, that the mats would work for us.
And the board did recognize that that request, the only thing was, is that they were told that those mats were dangerous, and they didn't feel that it would be sufficient to go ahead and move forward with two people that had claimed that they were okay, when others were claiming that they were dangerous. So they didn't want to move forward with that. And plus, the mats that we have provided, our board feels, aren't big enough, because the dons don't always fall on them. So if we were to move forward with a mat, they'd want to see a larger mat. So that was the discussion.
Has anybody asked the Maple Flooring Manufacturers Association about the use of mats? Because they, the letter talks about, like, pro sports, baseball, softball, batting practice, the use of floor protection. Except for using soft versions. I mean, do we ever have batting practice?
We don't have batting practice, no.
So we wouldn't have, like, an inside whatever?
They do pitching and catching practice with soft, the rubberized softy balls, but they don't do bats, no.
But did anybody ask this Manufacturers Association about the use of mats?
No, we didn't, we didn't ask them specifically what kind of mats would be recommended, or if we should use mats, no.
I have-
If the mats that you had provided were okay with the twirling association, except they weren't big enough, is there any problem getting bigger ones?
Well, they're very expensive. The ones that we purchased were expensive.
Well, maybe the ones you have, and how much are they cost?
They're six by 10, and they were 300, and I don't know exactly, 300 and some dollars each. We have two of them.
And do we use them for anything else, other than-
No, we purchased them specifically for that purpose, so that we could continue to allow them.
And how big would be big enough?
The board had recommended 10 by 10 as a minimum. We don't want to go too big, because they didn't want to overwhelm the gym. They don't want it to be, like, when we have open gym, they don't want to put so many mats down that it's all just twirling.
How much is a 10 by 10?
That's what they recommended.
How much is that?
Oh, I, it was, I'd have to look and see. Josh had did the research, so I don't remember how much it was, but I think for the two of them, it was over $1,000.
All right, so in the research I had started, there is, when winter guards from high schools go and compete during the winter, they have protective coverings that they cover the entire floor with. So those are the companies that I was looking at for protective covering, because I know that they're used across the area. At all high schools for winter guard competitions would hatch, which has flags and rifles made, mostly, they don't have baton twirling, but the flags and rifles would do more damage anyway. And Drill Comp is the one company that I look for, and the way I read this, I think a 10 by 10 floor covering that we can roll up would be like $200, $300. And just to go on the record, for my purposes, and I would think that maybe a couple of us would agree, I wouldn't mind helping pay for the mats if it meant that we could still practice there.
Well, that was definitely a discussion the board had, that if these mats were to be purchased, that they didn't, they weren't necessarily saying that the township would be willing to pay for them at this point. They, I mean, that would be up to the board's recommendation and council, but the board wasn't necessarily saying that just because we're looking at mats, they were willing to pay for them. They were just saying, let's look and see what we have before we-
Would it be possible for us to extend this decision until our next meeting and do a little bit more research and a little bit more communication with the baton group?
So let us do this. Let us go back to the Maple Floor Association, find out whether mats mitigate their concern, and then let us go out and attempt to determine what type of mat would be the most appropriate.
And then we'll just table this until the next meeting.
Our only concern, and the board wanted to do this before the floor resurfacing, which is scheduled for September 10th, what do we do if this goes beyond that September 10th?
No, it won't go beyond.
Well, I think, I don't think there should be twirling on the gym floor until we resolve.
Unless we have protective mats, no twirling.
We're okay with that. I mean, if it takes a little longer, I mean, for a month or two, we're fine with that.
I'm just asking, I just wanted to make sure.
I mean, if we can just try and work through this, it's, like, as my daughter has two more years, and I need a place with a height, so.
That's fine, so we'll take, just take some time and-
Right, but you do understand that if the manufacturer comes back and says that even mats won't mitigate them, our hands are tied now.
I understand that, but like I said, and I can give you this, if you want it, this is a company that, they do floor coverings, and it's a-
We have, we have the information on the floor covers. We wanted from you what you guys felt would be safe, because we bought what were considered dance mats, and we thought were very appropriate, and I'm not saying, and you may have written back saying that you thought they were safe, but other people hadn't responded that way, and we just want to make sure that what we're doing is safe. We're not trying to put somebody at risk.
Yeah, well, my daughter's one of the oldest, too, so.
Mr. Cozer, I think you've given us direction, and I think we can move on, okay?
All right.
Okay.
To the mattresses.
Thank you.
Do we need a formal motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table, depending the information that we discussed here, and that to the extent that it takes longer than September 10th, that we're going to redo the floor and nobody's going to use it to resolve this need.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is acceptance of resignation from Peterstownship Environmental Quality Board.
Mr. Cosia is, will be moving out of Peterstownship at the end of November. He is submitting his letter of resignation for effective for November 10th.
I'll make a motion that we accept his resignation effective November 11th with regrets.
Second.
He doesn't want to commute.
Not from Delaware.
Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is award of a contract under the Pennsylvania Co-Stars program for the purchase of a utility vehicle produced by the Public Works Department.
The Peterstownship 2019 budget includes an appropriation of $39,000 for the purchase of a utility vehicle. This is replacing a piece of equipment that we currently own, that is approximately 10 years old. One of the things in your docket, one of the things I noticed as we were putting the docket together, that the quotation that we had received was actually dated. And I went back, had Michelle go back, and asked to make sure that these pricing was still okay. The fact of the matter is, the freight costs have gone up, so the cost of this item is It's my recommendation that we award a contract to Murphy Family, Inc., under the Co-Stars program for that amount.
So moved.
Sir.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is award of a contract under the Pennsylvania Co-Stars program for the purchase of a limb chipper.
Peterstownship budget includes an appropriation of $65,000 for a limb chipper for the Public Works Department. The existing limb chipper is over 11 years old. The price under the Co-Stars program for this item is $60,239.25 from Stevenson Equipment, Incorporated. Of this amount, $54,000, or approximately 90%, will be reimbursed to the township through a grant we have received. So it's my recommendation that the Peterstownship Council approve the contract to Stevenson Equipment under the Co-Stars program to purchase a brush bandit limb chipper at a cost of $60,239.28.
So moved. Motion in the second. Any further discussion?
How much would a limb chipper chip if the limb chipper could be moved?
I did have a, just a question, related to this, this and the prior item. Do we then sell those online, or do we retain those? What's the plan?
Well, the, the utility vehicle has little life left in it, and most likely will be sold. We have had problems in the past, because when we get into the season with the limb chipper, in terms of the volume that we're doing and having breakdowns. So our intention is to hold on to this limb chipper as long as it makes sense to use it as a backup.
If that makes sense, I just wondered what the plan was.
Thank you.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is award of a contract for a storm sewer rehabilitation project.
So the budget contains $300,000 for the maintenance of the township storm sewer system. To date, we've committed a little over $159,000 to various storm sewer projects. So there's $140,700 remaining. This project is a bid to rehabilitate a portion of corrugated metal pipe along Robinhood Lane. There were four bidders for this project. The low bidder was Insight Pipe at $72,303.50. We have used Insight for a number of projects, and they've proven themselves to be qualified and responsible, and therefore it's my recommendation that we award a contract to Insight Pipe for a storm sewer lining project along Robinhood Lane at the amount of $72,303.50.
So moved. Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is approval for recording purposes of the Westbury subdivision, as shown on drawings prepared by the Red Swing Group dated July 9, 2019, for Environmental and Sound Enterprises, LLC.
So we have had, in front of council, a couple times, this Westbury project, and so what they're beginning to do is to consolidate the land that they need to be able to undertake the development. So right now, there are two parcels. That larger brown parcel is the parcel that they currently own. That's, that blue parcel up above is a piece that they intend to acquire a portion of. So what this subdivision does is to take a portion of that land and incorporate it into the body of the other. So it's been through the planning commission, they have recommended approval, and the, the plan is depicted on drawings prepared by Red Swing Group dated July 9, 2019.
So Mr. Zook, may I just ask a quick question? With the addition of these properties, this is just, will you clarify, this will make the plan what they originally planned?
Correct.
It's not expanding it?
No.
Okay, that was a little confusing when I read this.
And the plan, the actual subdivision, will come to you sometime here, hopefully in early September.
Right, I just didn't know whether they were starting to expand.
Anne Stewart with Environmental &amp; Sound, hi. It's nice to be here. Just very quickly, this is the first step in bringing the property to consolidate it with the plan. It's the upper portion of the Westbury plan, so it's a simple subdivision of that parcel.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the Westbury subdivision, subject to the conditions set forth in the planning memo.
Sir.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is resolution establishing a policy for the transfer of ownership of the township with privately owned stormwater management facilities.
As council will recall, we got a request from the Woodland of Peters to consider taking over the stormwater management facility that is owned by the homeowners association. One of the things that came out of that discussion was to establish a set of criteria that we could apply to any request from a homeowners association for the township to take over those facilities. As council will recall, we, we had suggested, and council had concurred, with seven criteria that would be met by, by any homeowners association making this request. Those are outlined on the screen, as well as in your docket. I don't know that I need to go through those, but.
And the fact that this is supported by the engineer, I think, is important because of the new criteria, additional responsibility we have for the MS4 program. So I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 080319, establishing the policy for the transfer of ownership of privately owned residential stormwater management facilities to the township.
I'll second. Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Nay.
Four two, Mr. Lauer. Next item is ordinance amending the Peterstownship Code of Ordinances amending Chapter 315 of property maintenance.
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Zook.
Wanted to improve our property maintenance enforcement toolkit, and one of the ideas that my fellow planning staff came up with was a ticketing program, and this is a way in which the township can quickly enforce common property maintenance code issues such as high grass, weeds, junk cars, unkept properties. Let me see, what else?
Animals.
Animals, swimming pools that are not being kept. It's a way in which the township can quickly enforce and get these types of code enforcement violations dealt with quickly. And this ordinance, we're calling it, we're calling it the Quality of Life Ordinance. We would canvass the township as we see violations. There would be a door hanger that would be clearly placed on a property so that that property owner can see it. That door hanger will give clear notice of what ordinance is being violated, how many days they have to get that violation abated. There's a little description down there, we'll be filling that in for applicants. We will put our name and phone number on there to call us. That's step one. If they don't take care of it within a specified period of time, they will get a $35 ticket. Again, that ticket will clearly say, take care of business within this timeframe. If they do not, then there's a second ticket for $50 that will be sent to the property owner that's violating our township code. If that continues on, then we would go straight to the magistrate with a citation, and we deal with that issue at the magistrate's level. The property owner that would be violating this ordinance, getting a door hanger and a ticket, always has a right to appeal this to the magistrate's office, and we could deal with it there, but that's basically it. It's just a way in which the township can quickly deal with common property maintenance code issues. The way we have to deal with it now is time consuming, and certified letters, and it just takes a lot of time to deal with certain violations that if we use this ticketing program, we think we can get to these things a little quicker and be better for the community.
So the ordinance has been reviewed, not owned by the solicitor, but the planning department has sat down with the magistrate to make sure he's on board with this as well.
Do they have to pay the ticket?
Not if they, not if they-
If they don't pay the ticket, then what happens?
Well, you don't have to pay the ticket if you take care of the violation within the time specified.
Right, but let's say they don't, right? So they get a ticket.
They get a ticket.
Okay, who issues the ticket?
We do, the township staffs.
Okay, and then if they don't pay that, but they correct the violation, does the ticket ever get paid?
Yes, because you would go to the magistrate to collect it, just like you, this is analogous to what a parking ticket that would be issued. So you fail to pay the ticket, you're going to the magistrate, and you're going to assume the cost of having gone to the magistrate as well.
And how are you going to deal with those individuals that say, what door hanger? At least if you send a letter, that, that comports with due process, right? You're supposed to give them a period of time to bait the violation. If they don't, you go right to the magistrate. I don't see how this is going to be any quicker.
Are you going to take pictures of the door hangers, cleaning them up?
Yes, yes. It'll be quicker. We think that these door hangers, we'll put them in places where property owners can clearly see them, we'll document that we placed them there, and we think that we can attack these property maintenance code issues quicker.
And Mr. O'Curry, wait, when I looked at this, I had similar questions. I think the issue is that they probably won't be going to try to collect their fine. They will probably be going to issue a citation, like, they will start the more formal process. Whether that fine drags along, or the magistrate issues his own fine, this will wait to be seen, but I get it. This is sort of a faster process, hopefully someone just complies in lieu of this, the more formal process.
Is it going to be big and orange?
Take a picture of it. Was their actual hanger they have?
Well, that's, the, the door hanger was back on the last slide, but we'll customize it, we'll, we'll make them big when we need to, we'll, we'll use a variety of ways to get that door hanger clearly present on that property.
So if it doesn't work, the current process will just be implemented, is the way I see it. They're just trying to, fat, because in usually-
So if this doesn't work, they're going to go use the old, they're going to-
Oh, going to use the old process, yeah.
If that site's, like, through high grass, time we send a letter, 30 days, and summer's over, and their grass is 10 foot tall, this is hopefully a little faster, you know, something's going to happen, that's all.
I just didn't think it was going to be the color, right?
No, that, well, and if you look at my screen, it isn't the color.
I mean, all highway guys went to the lime green.
It's going to be something, you say.
We'll make it bright.
Well, I'd just like to say that I'm, I think that this is a good idea, Mr. Zook, and I think your staff came up with something smart. Right now, in the past, you rely on residents to complain or file all the violations and this, and if you're proactively going around and identifying properties, and theoretically going up to the door, you may hand this to a person at their home. So, you know, the whole idea of just dropping in on the door isn't always going to be the way. We did talk a little bit about the idea that, I talked with Mr. Koontz about the idea that, you know, sometimes people don't go to their front door, so we may need to maybe put it on the garage, but it sounds as if you're working through some of that, and it makes more sense, that this is a better way to initiate some action.
Yeah, first contact.
Right, right. And as far as the other things, you've already said it's been approved by the magistrate, the lawyer, and the police. And the different times that they'll be given, it's going to be based on what you see, I presume?
Yeah, depending on the violation, some may get a few days, some may get several days, depending on the exact situation.
Right, I think it's just important that people understand what to expect when this starts happening, because it is a little different than what we've done before, but I do, again, think it's a, a good way to approach the problem.
If we approve this, when would it formally be implemented?
Soon as possible.
I would think within the next 30 days. Because we, we would have to get the door hangers printed.
Printed.
Printed and that, yeah.
Figure a few things out, and go to work with it, if you adopt it.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 845, amending the Peterstownship Code of Ordinances, Chapter 315.
There's a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Simmons. Sure, come on up.
Sure, sorry about that, Mr. Simmons.
Bob Simmons, 170 Simmons, right, I've been a resident of Peterstownship for 57 years. I was one of the lucky ones that got your 10-inch grass violations, one of them. I was farming, on my farm, I'm farming along as usual, as normal, and I get a call from a very upset 80-some-year-old woman in Texas. Her name is Jean Haven. Her farm and my farm are both in ag security area, which I won't even get into. I've asked you three months ago, I asked you about that, and I-
I'm going to talk about that today.
Got no response at all. But however, she received a letter from you, from Peterstownship, threatening her with a lien against her property, because she was told that her property has not been properly maintained. I leased her property, I've leased her property for years, all my life, my grandfather, grandfather, probably, probably 100 years, probably. It came, that letter came with a picture- It came, that letter came with a picture that is the intersection of Sienna Trail and Just About Road. And that's the stop sign at Sienna Trail and Just About Road. And as you can see, the grass is high around it, and that is what she was cited for, grass being too high, grass and weeds too high. But as you can also see, that is the road right-of-way. And I did my research. You are responsible for the road right-of-way. You were not cutting it. You did not properly cut it. You did not properly maintain it. Okay? And she was cited for it. I do not understand that. My staff and staff, I told them that we do our normal farming practice, and that's what I'm going to continue to do. We mow about two times a year, cut hay two times a year. Mowing goes along with cutting of hay twice a year, it's normal. And I was... It was made very clear to me that that's not good enough. Well, I don't know what to say about that. I think my farm is in very good shape. I think I maintain my farm as good or better than you. And as an example of that, I live in Windermere. My farm, my yard backs onto my farm. It's a beautiful view. Across the street from me, in Windermere, is about 10 acres that you, Peters Township, made the developer give to you as open space.
That's HOA open space.
You got it, whoever, homeowner, whatever, you got it first. You may have turned it over to homeowners association, in my view, as much your responsibility as homeowners association. You haven't set foot on that property. There's stormwater management down there. You've never done anything to it. It has grown up terribly. You're in violation of your own laws in that, and you're also in violation of the Pennsylvania state law. It's called the Noxious Weed Control Law. And it specifically names multiflora rose and things like thistle, Canadian thistle. That whole parcel is covered with multiflora rose. It's the worst stock there can possibly be for ground. It is the worst. It was beautiful. I farmed it at one time. It was beautiful when I farmed it. Now that you or the homeowners association, whatever, I still see it as your responsibility. And I'm sure there's pieces of open space that you are responsible, that you do nothing with, that you are not taking care of. So as you pass these laws and make them, convince staff to enforce them, enforce them, now you're making it quicker to enforce it, I really think you should look at yourself and your properties that you are not maintaining. And these violations do cause, that caused tremendous problems for me. That woman from Texas flew up here. She was so upset, and I almost lost my lease, a lease that I've had forever. I almost lost the lease. Now, staff did call her and tell her, there's no problem. Well, I don't understand if there was no problem why the violation was sent in first place, but he did. He called her, told her there's no problem. She was still very upset. She came up here, and I almost lost my lease. So please be aware, when you're enforcing these things, it can cause tremendous problems. And I do believe that the agricultural security area should provide me protection from nonsense like this. Thank you.
I would have to say, Mr. Simmons, I apologize. I had no idea that you've been through this. And I would personally agree that agricultural land is a different story altogether. You're a business, and you have certain methods that you must follow to achieve the goals of your business. So what would...
But this is a violation of the language with regard to site triangles at the corner of properties. And all property owners, whether they be residential, commercial, or agricultural, are covered by that particular provision to maintain a clear site triangle.
What is his comments about the right-of-way? Where do we fall into that, as far as the township?
The way that ordinance is structured is the responsibility for maintaining the site triangle is on the property owner.
But just to be clear, we're not citing agricultural operations for not mowing their fields, right?
No, no. This was a site distance issue at Just About and Sienna Trail, where folks could not see oncoming traffic when they were making turns.
But isn't that the road right-of-way?
It was a safety...
It's the road right-of-way. That's your responsibility.
Maintain, under the ordinance, the maintenance of site triangles is on the property owner, is not on the township.
Well, Paul, I'd have to say, I get confused with, we do mow alongside roadways.
Mm-hmm.
And how do I distinguish where we mow along roadways versus Mr. Simmons's question about intersection?
And it's trees, and you know it's trees.
You've got to come up with a point.
Who is... It's trees, Ed, and you know it's trees. We were there and we looked at it. Who's removing the trees? Not me.
Well, if the trees are...
The trees are blocking the view.
If the trees, weeds, grass are blocking the view in the right-of-way, outside the right-of-way, someone needs to take care of either the state, this was Just About Road...
Just About Road, but it's a stop sign for Sienna Trail. Sienna Trail is a township road, so you're talking about a tree. All that should be your responsibility.
You know, the township...
It's ridiculous.
The township maintains landscape areas and other plants. And if we're doing that, I'm not sure, I don't see Mr. Lewis's point of why it might not make sense that we have some responsibility for the right-of-ways. I mean, I... I'm sorry, I didn't realize that there was a situation going on like this, or I wouldn't have made it so quite that...
I'll say, Paul, the township takes care of a lot of growth in the right-of-ways.
Yeah. And you take care of a lot of landscaping and plants that existed without HOA.
This was an area, a large area on a state right-of-way. It was both inside and outside the right-of-way.
No.
And it needed to be taken care of because it was a safety issue.
Okay, so let me ask you a question. Okay, if that argument's true, given the fact we're trying to be proactive about property maintenance, and that was an actual potential danger, why wouldn't we have cut it and built the homeowner or the owner of the property?
Because you have to give them an opportunity to do that first on their own, rather than to occurring at expense that they have not authorized. Like, when we have yards that are overgrown, we can't just go in and mow somebody's yard and send them a bill. We need to give them an opportunity to remedy the situation first. And when they fail to do that, we will go in and mow and bill them.
And I'm not advocating that you go on private property. That is purely a visual issue, not a danger because there's a site issue. To me, that's a different situation. I don't know what the rest of you would feel, but I mean, I guess, for example, even on Springdale at Sienna Trail, when you're coming towards Water Dam, that tree pop, that tree cops right there gets to be overgrown and you can't see. You know, I mean, places that are routinely a problem, you know, I guess I'm not sure why his argument doesn't make sense.
Well, sometimes it is the right-of-way, and the growth is in the right-of-way, and the township or state will take care. Sometimes it's not.
I want to make sure I understand this. So you are, Paul, you and Ed are saying that I or Mrs. Haven need to cut those trees down at the intersection of Just About Road and Sienna Trail.
We're saying that we'd like to see that area maintained, so that growth...
What are you saying, Ed?
Does not get to the point where it blocks site distance, and if that's...
It's trees, Ed. They've been there for 100 years.
It's not trees.
Ed?
You can't communicate. It's not trees, mostly weeds.
There it is. That's grass, that's trees.
I'm not that familiar with the intersection, but...
Yeah, I'm looking at it here on Google Maps, so...
It's just, it's a small block of trees.
Is it where the stop sign is?
That's grass, that's trees.
And there are other 10, 10, 10 inches in diameter. And this is what I'm talking about. I mean, you're going to drive the farmer out. I mean, we can't have this nonsense.
Well, it's not, in my personal opinion, I think agricultural should be looked at a little bit differently.
Especially in an ag security area that you signed and agreed to.
Wow.
We'll talk about that later, so...
So is it cleaned up now?
Yes.
Trees aren't?
The site distance is open.
So the trees are not an issue, then?
Correct. It was mostly the weeds growing up that was blocking the site distance.
That is not true, Ed.
All right. So we understand now that the trees are not an issue?
That's right.
Okay.
All right.
So you heard it here, Mr. Simmons, the trees are not an issue.
Good to hear.
But what is...
That's, that's grass.
I know, but what are you saying? What's blocking these trees?
Yeah, see, because, this is, like, you can't see, this is Just About Road, you can't see the cars coming in with these trees here.
You can see it.
You're kidding?
All right. I mean, I know that my expectation is in the developed residential areas of our community where these problems have manifested themselves, that this is a positive step.
That would be my, I would concur with that.
To the extent that it applies to active agricultural areas, I don't know whether it needs to be stated that they're exempt.
We understand that clearly. I've been here many, many years. That was the first...
Not as long as he has.
Almost. But that was the first time a letter ever went to them, and trust me.
Plugged, storm, plugged, culvert under Just About Road, Ed. Same lady got the same letter.
Right. We can vote on this if you want.
All right, I think there was a motion made. Did we get a second?
We did not.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is payroll and bills.
Before we move on, Mr. Lauer, could we look at this maybe a year from now, to see how this is working?
Oh, yes, I think that's probably a good idea. It's a new process, so we'll let you know.
See a lot of weeds growing by next summer.
Well, and given the conversation and Mr. Zook's agreement that planning understands agricultural, that hopefully this won't create...
I don't, it will not. I don't think this is intended to do that, so...
No, actually, as I've said, I'm happy because I agree with Mr. Lewis. It's more about the residential. But to pull that up, Mr. Simmons' comment about some of the open spaces, maybe we need another conversation about that going forward.
Yeah, that's not the first time that's come up, either.
No. You know, in certain plans, the HOAs are responsible to maintain the common areas. I know that, because the one I live in has to cut the grass and do all that, keep the weeds down. I don't know what the situation is once the open space is identified. And we've had the conversation that some of this open space is unusable. And it's not, you know, it's, in past history, it's been nothing but a place for weeds to grow and trees to grow. People don't play there. People can't use it to recreate.
Well, and some of the open space is intended to be just that. It's intended to preserve the natural setting that was there. So it's intended to protect steep slopes and the trees that are on those slopes, so...
And I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying that perhaps we need to look at if there are issues with some of them.
Yes, I would agree.
Okay, next item is payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, I review the payroll and bills. I find them in order and they'd be paid.
I'll second. You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. There's some charges on here for Ingram Library Services. What's that?
Books for the library.
Books for the library.
We're buying them from, is that a company? Some kind of library?
Yeah, no, no.
And what about the Captain Clothing Company? What's that for?
That's where the police get their clothing embroidered.
Pardon me, I...
The police get their clothing embroidered there, certain types of embroidered clothing they get from them. Thank you.
I had a question about the credit card statement. A few months ago, I suggested to you that perhaps we should talk to Ace Hardware, because there are multiple trips to Ace Hardware concurrent days, the same day repeatedly. And they do actually have a delivery service. And I just wondered if you had had an opportunity, or Mr. Hurson had an opportunity, to check that out so that our staff wasn't driving over there and...
I was unaware that they'll actually deliver. Let me check with Mr. Hurson.
Oh, I understand. I sent that email to you several weeks ago.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is correspondence. Anything we need to discuss in correspondence?
Yes. In your docket is a letter from Jennifer Dan, Treasurer of the Washington County Watershed Alliance. In June of 2013, Peters Township Council authorized a payment of $100,000 to the Sharktears Watershed Association for the purpose of partially funding the engineering costs associated with the Kansburg Lake Restoration Project. The project for which these funds were earmarked has never been completed. The Watershed Association served, in essence, as the custodian of these funds. The funds were actually issued to another group. The Watershed Association intends to disburse the remainder of the funds, the $65,000, to a newly formed Kansburg Restoration and Improvement Committee. And I spoke with Mrs. Dan and expressed my concern with the transfer of the funds in that you're dealing with public funds, and they were given for a specific purpose by Peters Township Council, and now they're being transferred to a new committee that has been formed with no restriction. And I didn't know whether, from council's perspective, the preference would be that those funds be returned to the township, or they simply be transferred over without restriction to the new group. You've got people in the audience from that group, so...
I'll just hear from the new group.
Hi, I'm actually representing the Watershed Alliance. My name's Sam Carroll. To give a little bit of the history of the lake, there were projects that were completed. There was a weir built. There was also an access road built down through. The main reason why other funds were used over these funds that the board offered back in 2013 is that those were grant funds and had grant deadlines. At the time, it was seen by everyone involved that the grant didn't have, that was given by you guys, didn't have an expiration necessarily, so other funds were used first. So there was projects completed. The reason for the transfer to the new group, basically, the two groups have just split. So they now have pursued their own 501(c)(3) charitable organization status. They have gotten that from the state. So now they are their own separate entity. So the idea of transferring the funds is that the two groups are splitting, and these funds would be going to the group that is conducting the projects that the funds were originally intended for. So the lake group would be doing these projects with the lake. The Watershed Alliance is an overarching body for the entire county. And the reason, another reason from our perspective why we would like to transfer these funds is that it has hindered us in being able to obtain some grants. So several grants have looked at us, see this inflated balance sheet because of the Kansburg Lake funds, and it has hindered us in obtaining some future funds. So for that reason, we would like to see these funds transferred to the new group and off of our balance sheet. I understand you may have some concerns about using it. I can't speak necessarily to what the new group intends to use the funds for, but they would be for lake projects. I know there's potential for rehabilitating some of the work that they had initially done. Also, there was talk of dredging portions of the lake once that rehabilitation work was done. There's a lot of work still to be done at the lake. Like Mr. Lauer said, $34,000 approximately was spent. There's a still remaining $65,000.
And again, to keep the players separate, the alliance existed simply as the custodian of the funds, because they had the capacity to receive those funds and account for them.
Yes, we have that nonprofit status, which they have now gone out and sought. So that's why the alliance was, one of the reasons the alliance was initially formed was so that Sharktears Creek and Peters Creek and Buffalo Creek, that all the creeks of the county didn't have to go get their own nonprofit status, that we would serve as that agency for grant sponsoring, and we could control those funds. But now they have their own 501(c)(3) status, and that's...
Could you explain why that happened, though? I mean, was it not working the other way?
Why the split was made? So I don't know the entire history relatively new to the Watershed Alliance, but both groups have decided that it was in their own interests, mostly, and one reason, because of the funding situation. So we were being hindered because we had their money on the books, and that was preventing us from going out and seeking grants. They've now decided it was in their best interest to form their own independent group.
And Mr. Lauer, we sent that to them as restricted funds specifically for Kansburg, used around Kansburg Lake, is that correct? used around Canonsburg Lake, is that correct?
Well, we were approached back in 2013, and the pitch from the committee for the lake was that they needed engineering monies, so that in fact they could go out and bid the project at Canonsburg Lake. And that money was specifically given for that intended purpose, to do that engineering work.
Sorry, it looks like you want to speak. Want to go forward?
You keep edging closer.
First of all, I, you know, compliment Mr. Lauer and, and the council for being good stewards of the township money. As a taxpayer, I like to see it spent properly and not wasted. I'm, my name is Tim Silbaugh. I do have some correspondence that I had sent to Mr. Lauer, and if people don't mind, if he doesn't mind, I can distribute it to.
It's their meeting, not mine.
And who do you represent, sir?
I'm, I'm working, I'm the chairman, my name is Tim Silbaugh, by the way. And I'm the chairman of the new association, which is a Pennsylvania nonprofit association, and which we've obtained 501(c)(3) status, and that was.
What is your mission, though? That's what I, what is your mission?
My mission, our mission is to restore the lake. The lake, based upon where we stand at this time, and based upon an Army Corps of Engineers study done some time ago, I may not have brought enough of these.
They, only they need them.
Based upon an Army Corps of Engineers study, at some point, they said that within 20 to 25 years from when the study was done, which was done around 2012, the lake won't be there anymore. It will just be a marsh. And if you see the southern part of the lake now, you'll see that better than, I'd say close to half of it is just, it's marsh now, and some of it's solid. I've been living there for three, by the way, I, I grew up in Beaver County, just as an aside, I grew up in Beaver County, and fell in love with a girl that lived down here in Peters, and she said, one of us is going to have to move, and it won't be me. And I've never regretted coming to Peters Township. I'm glad to be here. It's a great community. It's nice to be here. And we have a place along, along Canonsburg Lake, and I was approached a couple of years ago, shortly after we moved in, by Deborah Valentino, who was heading the committee quite a while ago, and she asked if I would participate in it, and I've done some other charitable things in the past. So I did get involved, and then we thought that the best way to move forward would be to figure out where we are with this, what needs to be done, and do it in a methodical way to, to preserve the lake. And we thought the best way to do this, first of all, was to form an entity, and, I'm sorry.
Sam.
Sam, as Sam mentioned, it was just a loose group of people. They called themselves a committee, and some of the members, I don't know, many, many years are here. And so we said, well, we've got to form some kind of association. So we formed a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation. And then we gained 501(c)(3) status so that we could move forward with this. And it, it helps by, in raising money from other sources. We've been in contact quite a bit with Pennsylvania legislators, with the Pennsylvania Fish Commission, and with federal legislators, also a federal legislator, let me put it that way. And they've all expressed a willingness to participate with us and help us restore the lake. They realize that there's a lot of value to it. And they said, you know, but we're, we're not going to do it all. You've got to go get local grants and things like that. So, you know, we have the money that was still held, and it counted your, your funds, it's about 210, 211,000, but, again, you know, issue the trade, about how much is this?
This is for Paul.
Yeah.
About 210,000.
Okay, about 210,000. We've now, to try to get to the end of this, we have the two bills that Baker Engineering had sent that were part, one of them was paid in full with your funds, and one of them was paid in part with your funds. The rest of the funds are still there. And at the same time, North Strabane had, had granted funds too. They have funds left over. I've talked with them, and they said, fine, just transfer them over, and they don't have any problem with it. But we've now retained another engineering firm. Baker said that they really didn't want to continue to work on the lake. So we've retained PA Soils and, PA Soils and Rock. And I think I, maybe I didn't include their proposal in, in the package, but anyway, we have a proposal from them to do engineering firm, or engineering work that would be necessary before we really want to, we want to figure out what we've got, and what the problem is, and how we can solve it, before we just go out and start to do things. And so that's why we've retained, or at least we've gotten a proposal for Pennsylvania Soil and Rock. And they proposed that we do a study to determine how much of the lake is gone, and then what we could do with the, with the sediment. And the cost that they have in here, including their fees, it's about $60,000. It's around 50, but by the time you add things on, it'd be closer to 60. What we'd like to propose is that rather than to, you know, say, well, we want our money back, because the money was already granted, and based upon your budget, it's a whole lot. But on the other hand, we'd be, we'd be thrilled if, you know, people from Peters Township, with the, with the township would participate with us. If you have somebody in the township government that would be willing to be on, be on our board, we'd be thrilled. And the other thing we would request is that, rather than to take the funds back, they'd be either held by us if the alliance doesn't want to hold them, then held somewhere so that we wouldn't spend them without, you know, you approving it. Rather than to take it back, because frankly, when we're looking for more funds, and people say, well, what did your local township do? And we say, well, they gave us money, but they took it back. That's going to hurt us. Whereas if it's there and it's used for engineering as intended, then that gives us, you know, at least an opportunity to raise more money, which we're going to have to do. The total cost, that's what we're trying to figure out, what the total cost would be. We really don't know at this point. And then one final thing, I know it's getting late, and everybody wants to go, was there was a master plan done, I think it was 2005, 2006.
Six.
2006.
Six.
And the township participated in it. And under that master plan, there was a lot to be done with the lake. And, you know, it was like a park area, and, you know, just a lot more to be done with it, which would really improve it. Right now, you know, with the sediment that's accumulating, it's not, at some point, it's not going to support fish anymore. And when it doesn't support the fish, then it's not going to support waterfowl, and it's not going to support the eagles, and it's not going to support the fishermen coming down here. So it's, it's a good asset for us economically, because when the fishermen come here, they buy bait, they get lunch, they, you know, do all the things, buy fuel and that sort of thing.
Sir, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
In the past, when the alliance had the funds, did you have to make application to the alliance? And were there any safeguards that the alliance had in place that are no longer going to be in place in terms of what you were to do with the funds?
Well, if we have the funds, then I guess the safeguards would be our own responsibility. The safeguard would be that we're 501(c)(3), so we can't use it for anything except public purposes. And the other thing is that our mission is Canons per Lake.
That's fine, I just wanted to know the question.
Essentially, in the past.
You have to come up there, Sam.
In the past, at least for our, our organization, there's a certain number of signatures on each check, so that not any one person is just writing blank checks for whatever they intend on. So I assume they could set up something almost identical, where they would have two people, two board members.
Was there any approval process from the alliance, or no, you just passed through?
The funds.
No, as to what they were going to do with the money?
So it was our intention that anything related to the lake and the lake restoration, those, those were the funds, but we weren't necessarily saying, yes, you can go spend that money. They were submitting receipts.
So nothing's going to change? You're just, you're eliminating the pastor?
Essentially, it's making, putting the money in the hands of the people who are actually going to use it.
Well, in our case, you know, we're requiring two signatures for every, every check, every payment that's been made, and in fact, we have a full approval process that we use. Deanne is our treasurer, and she, she's been applying to the alliance for funds that we've got.
Okay, I mean, well, it seems to me that the monies are going to go for the same purpose for which they were earmarked. So I'll make a motion, and we approve the transfer. I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to ask a question.
Thank you. I could go on and on. I'm a lawyer. What am I going to do? Thank you.
Should we ask for a copy of their audit when they get it, at the end of their first year?
Did we ask for that?
From the alliance?
From the alliance.
I don't know that the, I have no idea whether the alliance is subject to an audit. I would assume.
A most nonprofit.
I would assume they do an I-90, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying. For grant purposes, usually they're looking for that. Do you plan to do an audit at the end of your first year?
We didn't really talk about it, but that's a good idea, the publisher. I don't know that we did an audit by CPA, but we certainly should announce identity to do an audit.
All right, you can give us a copy of that audit after you.
Sure. Make that as a condition.
All right, I'll add that as a condition. Motion. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Good luck, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next is the reports. Does any member of council want to discuss any of the various committee reports? Seeing nothing, let's move on to miscellaneous. First item is 2019 proposed budget calendar.
Yes, actually, there was a mistake on that calendar, so I redistributed it to everyone. But you can take a look at that. If anybody has problems with the dates, they can get back in touch with me. I have a bunch of things on miscellaneous.
Okay, next thing was the health insurance rates for 2020.
We have been notified that, I think this is a third year running, there's a rate freeze on our health insurance, which is kind of remarkable. But having said that, there will be a 3% increase in the cost of health insurance, and that's a result of taxes under the Affordable Care Act. It's, given that this is a rate freeze, it's my intention to bind that as opposed to go out and attempt to chop that, so.
It's fine.
I have a number of things that aren't listed under miscellaneous that have been questions that council has asked, and I wanted to provide answers to. One of the items was, I think Mr. Steigl raised a question as to whether or not the Fish Commission could come and do another survey of the lake. They in fact did a survey of the lake in 2017. They've updated those results at a request to 2019, and a copy of that report is in, is on your desk. What essentially it says is that the lake is still in a healthy condition. I thought it was interesting, this was a picture of one of the fish, the bass that was caught in that lake when they did that survey, so.
Wow. They put it back?
Yeah.
It's got to be five or six pounds?
Not that big. It's 21 inches, they said.
Caught this bigger than that one, a bass. That's a nice fish.
The other, the other item that was.
They release it?
Yes. The other item that I owed you information on was on the ag security area. We've gone back and researched this. Under the law that creates the ag security area, participants, farmers, receive special consideration in three areas. And in fact, the first is the reason why the ag security district was created in the first place. It doesn't stop farmland from being condemned by state and local government agencies. What it does is require that there be an additional process. And so the ag security area was created at the point in time when there was thought that the Southern Beltway could pass through Peters Township. So the other thing is, if you're in an ag security area, you qualify for consideration for the farm preservation program that is run by the county conservation districts, in which they can buy development rights from farmers so as to preserve the, the agricultural land. And given what the cost of those development rights would be, in the case of Peters Township, I don't think it's likely that you would see the conservation district interested in acquiring development rights as a way to preserve farms. And finally, there is this protection from local ordinance and nuisance lawsuits that affect normal farming activity. And whether there's an agricultural security district or not, that protection's already afforded to any farmer under other acts. So those are the three reasons why the security area exists. The purpose of the committee is to advise council and the local planning commission about the established modification and termination of the ag security area. So what the committee does is it determines what land is in fact included in the ag security area. And it's what you could probably appreciate, when that ag security area was created, it has changed dramatically the land that now qualifies for it. Because we're, we're, there is a requirement that protects land from condemnation, it doesn't preserve land. So can you zoom in on that? So one of the things, one of the things you looked at is everything that is, is colored there at one point was in the ag security area, and all of those things that are shown in yellow are now land that would no longer qualify to be in the ag security area. So there may be value in, in reconstituting the committee to examine, to make a determination that in fact these areas should be removed. It would also be an opportunity if there were other land that was suitable for farming that it, that it be included. The committee is, is created by council, and it is appointed by the chairman of council and consists of three active farmers from different farms. One citizen who resides in the community, and one, one member of council who serves as its chair. And again, the sole purpose for the committee is to ascertain whether or not property should be included in the, in the ag security district. So if council wants, we can attempt to reconstitute that, that committee and solicit input from people who are, might be interested on serving on it.
Well, I think we should have, for no other reason than to address which parcels are now in that ag security area.
Okay.
Anyone feel differently about that?
No.
John, can I say something?
Sure. I want to thank you for bringing it back to our attention.
No problem. Bob Simmons, 170 Simmons Road. That was kind of, very untransparent government. I, I asked three months ago to, about this, and it to be on, it was not on the agenda. It wasn't on, don't you think that's something that the rest of the farmers in Peters Township and the landowners in Peters Township should have heard and know about? And shouldn't it be on, shouldn't it be an agenda item?
Mr. Lauer, can you put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Sure.
Thank you.
I will make the statement that I felt that we needed to bring it up. I asked Paul if he would be prepared to give me an update as to where we were with that process of considering. That's what I expected tonight.
Yeah, because I do, I mean, the reason that I, I mean, I'll be prepared, that's not because I do disagree that the only purpose of the committee is for which properties are in and which properties are not. I disagree with that. That is not true.
I don't think that's what they said. I think that's at least.
Well, that's what Paul said.
No, no, that's exactly, no. John, that's exactly what I said, and that's what the act provides for. That doesn't mean that the committee can't do other things, but what the act provides for is that.
Okay.
Well, I agree with Mr. Lewis. I was going to ask about that for the next agenda item, so we didn't get to that yet. But thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Simmons.
You're welcome.
Definitely something you need to talk about.
I have a couple other things.
Go ahead, Paul.
I just want to let you know that Senator Church Road is open, and thanks to Mark Zepertz, it was actually open on time, so that in fact, it was. it was actually open on time so that, in fact, it was available on the first day of school.
And it is, I can say that I was one of the first people to drive it, and just because I hadn't go home that way, and the signs were gone, so I just kept driving. And it's an unbelievable improvement over what was there before.
Yes. And the last thing, and I'll provide you more information on this in the future, but I just wanted to point out over the weekend, we had a burglary that occurred along Irish Time Road, and there was an alarm that came in. The police responded that alarm. The perpetrator was still on the premises when they arrived, exited out another door, they took chase. He actually was able to leave the area, but one of the officers responding noticed that a truck was there parked at a weird angle, got that license plate, determined that person who owned that car had a criminal record for burglary, and that person was arrested in West Virginia as a result of the efforts. So it's kind of like the system working as you would hope it would.
Anything else, Mr. Lauer?
That's it.
Okay, Matt? Yes, Carol?
I have two things, Mr. Cozer. Given that we have already heard about Mr. Cozer resigning from EQB, and around this time of the year, I usually ask if we could investigate with the boards, who may or may not want to continue, so that we can be more proactive about looking at potential openings and potentially advertise, so that we can interview some people before we appoint them at the very end in January. So can we try to get our ducks in the room and find out who's interested in continuing, and then maybe lock in September or October to do something?
Yes.
I usually ask if there's, of all the people that we've interviewed, which has got to be into the thousands now.
Right.
If there are any of them who are still interested, so we don't have to interview another hundred group.
No, but I think we do need to open it up. People move in all the time to the township. The other thing I wondered about, a while back, we executed the lease agreement with Mr. Robinson. We approved it so that it would be executed. I would personally like to see a public the executed lease.
Sure.
Would that be possible with any other consulting?
Yes, that's not a problem.
Thank you.
Have we gotten any notice yet from Range about the royalties on the gas lease?
Only that sometime in November or December, we should expect to receive a royalty check.
Can we get the upfront on it?
Yes.
No, maybe there's a surplus wall.
Yeah.
No, for one.
Anything else? Any member of council wants to see on the next meeting agenda?
I wondered if we were going to see the ambulance service people?
I had talked to the ambulance service. Their preference would be to be able to meet with council at a workshop for an executive session. They don't think that a public meeting is an appropriate venue.
So can we ask them to come in for the next meeting for an executive session?
I can ask that question.
Because we have, have we released their money since we haven't seen them yet?
You were, at the last meeting, you authorized to release their money, and yes, we have.
But I thought it was contingent on them showing.
No, that was not, that was not the money.
That wasn't the case. Anything else anyone wants to see on the next agenda?
Just a question on the status of the emergency preparedness plan. If not next agenda, whenever.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's coming up to council at the end of September. We had a department head meeting that focused on that, and it's in the process of being revised based upon that input.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, we have an executive session tonight?
Yes, we do.
All right, meeting adjourned.